Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call back in to order this session of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for May 2nd at 7:10 PM. Thank you all for coming out to be with us tonight. If you would, please silence your electronic devices. Mr. Huff, would you bring the students in and then we'll do the pledge after they get in? And before we get started with the music, would you please join Mr. Hibbs in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They were just getting into it, too. All right, folks, this is the El Mariachi Tejano de Sam Houston. Director is Julian Timms. Interesting facts about tonight's program. The Sam Houston High School Mariachi Ensemble meets once a week after school for rehearsals. The group is made up of students from Sam Houston High School Band and orchestra programs, along with five students who are enrolled in the guitar class during the school day. El Mariachi Tejano de Sam Houston recently received a Division I at UIL Solo and Ensemble Contest. They also participated in the Mariachi Extravaganza Spectacular de Fort Worth, where they received a Division II for their performance. They will be performing "Carino." Bill Huff, where are you? Do you want to say a few things?
I do. I want to tell you kids how proud I am of them. And then the second thing I want to do is invite everybody to come to the Levitt Pavilion tomorrow night, because they're going to perform tomorrow night.
Mr. Huff, microphone, please. All the folks out there on the World Wide Web couldn't hear you.
All right, one more time.
Go ahead.
One, take the time, tell the kids how proud I am of them, because you can tell they've worked really hard. They're doing an outstanding job, and I'm very excited for what they're doing. And then to invite everyone to the Levitt Pavilion tomorrow night, they will be the sole performing ensemble for about 45 minutes, and I know you'll have a great time. It's free and a lot of fun. Bring a coat. It's going to be chilly.
What time?
Seven o'clock. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. All right, who gets to go on after the kids? Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. At this time, I'd like to ask Evan Smith to come forward and tell us a little bit about our special guest and the work that he's done as part of the YET Center and helping our students. Ms. Smith.
Good evening. How are you, President Barron?
Good.
Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board. It is my honor to talk this evening about a group that has some great honors for some of our students tonight. In September, the National Football League's desire to leave a Super Bowl legacy in Arlington will be realized when the Salvation Army opens the North Texas Youth Education Town. This new partner in the Arlington community is busy building a town of hope where its citizens will yearn for stronger spirituality, empower themselves academically, and thrive by living healthfully. I had the opportunity to meet the town manager, Mr. Kevin Dean Fuller, when he first moved to Arlington. We've had the honor to work together and strengthen the pipeline for our students to be really college-ready. Joining us tonight to recognize six of our Arlington ISD students for outstanding achievement and leadership are Lori Higgins, a Salvation Army DFW Command Associate; Kevin Fuller, the North Texas Youth Education Town Director of Operations; and Lieutenant Patrick Jones, the Arlington Core Officer, along with Bill Myers, the case manager. I would ask for them to come forward at this time.
Thank you so much. And what I'd like to do is go ahead and invite the students up as I name them, and then I'll talk about them as they're making their way. We have representing Relius Johnson, who can't be with us tonight because he's at the Mayfield Scholarship Banquet. His mother, Rolanda Morris, if you'll join me. We also have Wong Lu, who is a... I'm sorry, Relius is a senior at Bowie High School. Wong Lu is a junior at Arlington High School, and he's accompanied by his mother, Mintam Pham. And Bill Myers, his mentor, you guys can come on up. Kealan King is here. He's a sophomore at Bowie High School, and he is joined by his mother, Daphne Johnson. Eric Margatis could not be here tonight. He is at a baseball team playoff game, but he is a senior at Bowie High School. Kenneth NTI is a senior at Lamar. Trevor Thompson is a senior at Seguin High School. And we had a really unique opportunity through one of the Salvation Army Advisory Board members who's connected to the LEAP Foundation, and he extended an offer for seven scholarships across the Metroplex for students to attend the LEAP program out at UCLA this summer. And of the seven scholarships across the Metroplex, six went to students here in Arlington ISD, so you guys should be very proud of that. The LEAP Leadership Program is held at UCLA each summer. It's a one-week program in which students will sharpen their leadership skills and meet business executives, entertainers, and peer leaders. And it's an opportunity for us, before we ever even finish our construction, to empower these kids to extend their educational experience and prepare themselves for college. And so I am really excited tonight to be able to honor each of these individuals, and we're going to present certificates to them that simply say, "On behalf of the Salvation Army, we commend you on your personal and scholastic accomplishments, and we look forward to watching you grow spiritually and academically as a result of your selection as a 2013 scholarship recipient to participate in the LEAP Youth Leadership Program at the University of California, Los Angeles, awarded this second day of May 2013." Congratulations. Thank you so much for your participation. And thank you to the board for giving us an opportunity to recognize them publicly. We're very proud of these guys.
Tremendous, thank you.
Mr. Jones, would you come back? And Mr. Fuller? And what's the other?
Bill Myers is one of our case managers at the Salvation Army.
Perfect. Mr. Myers, Mr. Fuller, Mr. Jones, on behalf of the ISD, everyone from the board, we're allowed to present AISD logo lapel pins. Now, I hope they don't interfere with your uniforms.
Not at all.
But I know we can always grant a little bit, but just thank you for all your work, for all the work you do for students and families in Arlington. I think these six students would say you're very well-deserving of an award. This is awards that only can be given by the board and the superintendent to go out, and it's just thanking you for all the honors and all the distinction you give to AISD, because it does take a community to make these schools successful, and you guys are that piece of the asset that we need.
Thank you so much.
So on behalf of the board, we want to congratulate you and give you these.
We will wear them proudly. Thank you.
Six out of seven.
That's pretty good, yeah.
Next item on the agenda is recognition of our outgoing CBOC. Mr. Hibbs, you're on for this.
Thank you, President Barron. I'm excited to introduce to the... Everyone that's here in the boardroom tonight are outgoing Citizens Bond Oversight Committee members. These individuals have served for the past two years on the Bond Oversight Committee, and the purpose of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee is to provide findings and recommendations to the Board of Trustees relating to the expenditure of bond proceeds authorized by the Arlington Independent School District voters on November 3rd, 2009. I was able to be part of the original bond advisory committee and was the chair of that, and that's actually what led me to be up here. And so this is very close to my heart. These individuals, we passed a bond for $197.5 million back in 2009, and these individuals have been able to help be the eyes for the community. When we were putting each one of the projects out to bid, when we were discussing how we should go about allowing some of these funds to be used, and we actually even had a surplus of what's projected to be $10 million. These individuals helped us get to that point, and it's our pleasure and privilege to be able to honor each one of them for their volunteerism in the Arlington Independent School District. And if I could, I think I only have two of the members here tonight, but I would want to recognize all five. Justin Chapa, David Baker, Shandra Espina, Pat Richardson, and David Willbanks. If you could come forward, we've got something for you.
President Barron, you want to come down?
We'll make sure that everybody else gets their certificates, but as we did with the group before, you have served our community in such a way that these symbols that we wear on our lapels, we want to give each one of you, and we ask you to wear it with pride for the service that you've given us. We've got... Okay, thank you, sir. A certificate of appreciation presented to David Baker for serving on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and we appreciate you very much, David.
Baker.
Oh, David, sorry. David. David Willbanks, as they are. Okay.
Two Davids.
There is two Davids. And David Willbanks, we appreciate you. These two individuals have worked long and hard, and it hasn't just been on this Bond Oversight Committee either. They've worked very hard for us across the board on many committees.
You're going to get a picture. We've got one quick picture here. You're going to stick them in your pocket.
Once again, thank you, guys.
Dr. Cavassos, do you have an appointment for us?
I do. President Barron, I'd like to recommend the individual discussed in closed session for the principal of Wood Elementary.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hogg, second by Mrs. Peña. Please vote. All members, President voting in the affirmative, the motion passes. Dr. Rice is not with us tonight.
It's my pleasure to present to you the new principal of Wood Elementary School, Leslie Bettis. Leslie attended Stephen F. Austin to receive her Bachelor of Arts in Education and attended the University of North Texas to receive her Masters. Leslie is most recently the principal at Larson Elementary School. She's been an assistant principal at Wimbis Elementary School. She's been a kindergarten and fourth-grade teacher at Miller, a fourth-grade teacher at South Davis, and a fifth-grade teacher in Spring Branch ISD. Leslie, congratulations, and anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, thank you very much, President Barron, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos and members of the senior staff. Thank you for this opportunity. It has long been recognized that a culture of collaboration in which stakeholders can share ideas, discuss strategies, and work toward a shared vision is built upon a basis of mutual trust and common respect, but most importantly, valued relationships. It is with this philosophy that I embark upon my new journey at Wood Elementary. I would like the staff, parents, and students at Wood Elementary to know that I do truly have an open-door policy in which they can and should freely come talk to me about their thoughts and ideas or concerns. This open and frequent communication will create a collaborative culture and a strong community for students. I look forward to building long-lasting relationships as we continue to strive for greatness at Wood. I'd like to introduce my family. My son, Robert, is a sophomore at Martin High School, and he's here with me tonight. My two daughters, Ellen and Sarah, are with me in spirit. Sarah is a student at UNT, and she has class tonight, and Ellen is a UNT graduate and is working this evening. I would also like to say hello to my proud parents who are watching from Houston. Hi, Mom and Dad. In addition, I want to recognize the faculty and staff at Larson Elementary for the support and devotion they so willingly gave over the last four years. Together, we did amazing things. We saw the value in our work, and we inspired each other to do more and go further than we ever thought we could. Finally, I would like to thank the board, superintendent, and senior staff for this opportunity and for your confidence in me. Go Wildcats. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bettis. If you'll follow Mr. Hill out to the foyer, we will... The board will come out shortly and say hello, and if the folks in the audience would give us a minute to go through the receiving line, we'll be right back to continue the meeting. Next item on our agenda is the open forum for agenda items. We have note cards. Brings us to our action items. The first item is to consider the approval of teacher probationary and term contracts. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. At this time, I'd like to recommend the teacher probationary and term contracts as discussed.
I move that we accept the recommendation from the administration.
Second. Motion to approve the teacher probationary and term contracts as recommended by the administration. Motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Mr. Pampa. Is there any discussion on it? Please vote. All voting in the affirmative, the motion passes. Next item is to consider approval of term and probationary contracts for administrative and professional staff. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. The administration recommends the board approve the issuance of one-year term contracts to the administrative professional staff for 2013-2014 school year as discussed in executive session.
Move to approve administration recommendation, please.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sullivan, second by Mr. Hibbs, to approve the term and probationary contracts for administrative and professional staff. Discussion? Please vote. All president voting in affirmative, the motion passes. Thank you. 2013-14 Student Code of Conduct. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. The Student Code of Conduct was brought as a discussion item, and we had some revisions that were requested, and Ms. Muldrew is here to discuss those revisions and answer any questions before the board considers approval. Ms. Muldrew.
Good evening, President Barron, Dr. Cavassos, school board trustees, and senior staff. Oops, sorry. There we go. I am here to go over the changes and revisions that were requested from last school board's meeting, and we're going to start with page 18. When we talked about what was an impairment and what was used in Section 504, Dr. Rice had a question about Appendix A to Part 104, Number 3. We... I discussed with him that that was 504 law, and so to put that piece in the Student Code of Conduct would have been rather long, so we decided to delete that reference. And then we discussed using technology to degrade the character of school personnel. We decided to take that information out or that consequence out because there were other sections within our book that we could take care of a consequence if a student tried to use technology to degrade the character of school personnel. Then on page 52, we had transparent and/or see-through material that is acceptable with a full-length undershirt whose straps were no less than two inches in width. We have taken that language out, and we are going to go back to the original language, which will be transparent and/or see-through material is considered unacceptable. And then the last request was Dr. Cavassos wanted us to put a definition in the back on page 92 regarding homebound, so that we would not get homebound and home-based instruction confused. So we added this definition for homebound. Are there any questions?
Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, President Barron. No questions about the Code of Conduct. I always want to know, how are we dispersing this to students in the fall semester when they come back?
We have the information online, and we have a certain amount of books that we print for elementary, junior high, and high school, and we let the parents know that if they want an actual hand copy, that we have one available. We also have computers set up in our... In the lobbies of our... In the offices of our schools, so if the parents want to come in, if they don't have access to a computer at home, they can view the Student Code of Conduct online at the school building.
And electronics are main means. How are they?
Yes, sir.
And each parent, are they signing it electronically? Are they still having to sign a sheet of paper?
They're signing a sheet of paper. We send that out during the first week of school, and the student returns that sheet of paper back.
Good.
That they've acknowledged that they've read it either in print or online.
We want to make sure they read it, but I think in this day and age, we changed this last year, we don't need to be printing copies. And I understand having a few on hand.
Yes.
Are they also available in other languages?
Yes, sir. They're available in Spanish and Vietnamese.
Wow, okay, good, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Hibbs.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. That was actually the question I was going to ask, so I appreciate that, that shortens it. But just to reaffirm one thing that you said, so there was a newspaper article earlier this week that our children were going to school with see-through clothing. That's not happening.
No, sir, that is not happening.
Okay, we'll hope that makes the newspaper. Appreciate it. Thank you.
The piece of paper that the parent signs, is that the same one that the student signs, or is it?
Yes, sir.
It is, right?
The parent and student signature are on the same sheet of paper.
And those are retained at the campus?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Further questions? Okay, I'll take a wrap-up motion from Mrs. Peña.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's with all these changes, right? Okay. Second, motion by Mrs. Peña, second by Mr. Hibbs. Any further discussion on the Code of Conduct? This will be the shortest one ever. Well done. Please vote. Please vote. Thank you, Ms. Muldrew. We have a Code of Conduct.
All right, thank you.
Takes us to Board Policy AE Local. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. We discussed at the last board meeting, board work session, Policy AE Local dealing with our theory of action and our MPE, Managed Performance Empowerment. And so at this time, we're bringing it back for your approval.
I will take a motion from Mr. Pampa.
It is with great pride that I make a motion that we approve the update to our policy.
Second, with great pride.
A lot of prideful people around here. Motion by Mr. Pampa, second by Mrs. Sullivan to approve the AE Local, which is MPE. Any further discussion? We'll vote, and then I'm going to make something, make a statement. Please vote. All members present voting in the affirmative. The motion passes. Mr. Pampa, in say 20 words or less, can you tell us what MPE is? Oh, okay. Dr. Cavassos.
Sure. MPE is Managed Performance Empowerment, and that's where campuses and principals in particular will obtain autonomy for their buildings and certain processes such as budget and staffing, once they meet certain performance standards. And so the next step is to set those performance standards for those autonomies.
As frequently, we talk in jargon up here, and it's kind of nice for the folks out in the audience to know what we're talking about. So this is, this is truly power to the people now, out into the campuses. Thank you. Next, we will consider an order authorizing the issuance of the district's unlimited tax refunding bonds. And there's a motion that goes with it. I move to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of the district's unlimited tax refunding bonds taxable series 2013, appointing representatives of the district to act on behalf of the board in selling the bonds, and enacting other provisions relating to the issuance and sale of the bonds. And that's my motion.
Second.
And second by Mr. Hibbs. And discussion. Do we need a discussion on this before we vote? Just to briefly let the folks know what's going on here.
Right. President Barron, board members, Dr. Cavassos, First Southwest, our financial advisors had informed us a couple of weeks ago that we had an opportunity to refund our series 2004 and 2005 bond issues. And both of those issues are actually refundings themselves, so this is very similar to refinancing your house. And you refinance your house, and then interest rates continue to drop, and you take advantage of that by refinancing yet again. So that's what we are doing here. We have with us this evening George Wilford from First Southwest and Dan Culver from McCall Park, Hurson, Horton, our bond attorneys, to answer any questions you may have. They can present the information to you. We have available for refunding $76.5 million, and the potential refunding based on current market rates would generate a current savings of 5.968%. And what you are actually voting on this evening would be to grant parameter authority to the superintendent to actually execute the bond sale when and if the market conditions are such that they allow us to recognize a minimum savings of at least $375,000 a year on our bonds. We're anticipating that over the, the life of the bonds, we would save over $5 million potentially, based on current rates. So if you have any questions, Mr. Wilford is here, and Mr. Culver is here, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
I think we're happy with $5 million. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Board, please vote. All present voting in the affirmative. We will give the superintendent the authority to sell those at the proper time. Thank you. Next, we will consider a resolution appointing members of the underwriting syndicate for the district's unlimited tax refunding bonds taxable series 2013. I move to adopt a resolution appointing members of the underwriting syndicate for the district's unlimited tax refunding bonds taxable series 2013.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Barron, second by Mr. Hogg. Is there any discussion on this? Please vote. All present voting in the affirmative. The motion passes. Thank you. Brings us to our discussion action item, to consider the change of the Board of Trustees' meeting calendar. Administration is requesting the June 20, 2013 work session be changed to a regular business meeting to allow time for appointments if necessary. A public hearing action item regarding the budget and consent items. So we're changing June 20 from a work session to a regular business meeting, and the goal will be to get the budget completed that night and not have to have a special meeting the week afterwards. So the motion will be to change the calendar, the board meeting calendar on June 20 from a regular, from a work session to a regular meeting. And that's the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Barron, second by Mr. Pampa, to change the calendar. Please vote. So that's done. Thank you. Brings us to the consent. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Ms. Powell.
President Barron, board members, Dr. Cavassos, we have 17 bids on the agenda this evening for your consideration, and in each case, we recommend the lowest bids and the bids recommending, representing the best value to the district. Also, this evening, it is my pleasure to report that we have received donations from the following individuals and organizations. Parna Bissel and Associates, Arlington High School Choir Booster Club, the various individuals for the Arlington High School Class of 57 Scholarship, the Arlington High School Orchestra Booster Club, the Bowie High School Boys Basketball Booster Club, Bowie High School Baseball Booster Club, the Bowie High School Choir Booster Club, the Bowie High School Band Booster Club, Hope Tutoring Center, Lamar High School Band Booster Club, Lamar High School Choir Booster Club, AE Petsky Property Company, Glenn and Julia Davidson, Arlington Kiwanis Foundation, Martin High School Choir Booster Club, the Martin High School Band Booster Club, Thomas and Bobby Andrus, Bowles Junior High School Band Booster Club, Bowles Junior High School Orchestra Booster Club, Shackelford Junior High School PTA, Sharon Malouf, Butler Elementary School PTA, Kevin Carruthers and Cheryl Knight, William and Cynthia Duff Elementary School PTA, Gap Foundation Gift Match Program, Esther Park, Goodman Elementary School Third Grade Parents, First Rate, Don Painter Photography, Grissette Enterprises, Glamour Craft Studios, Swift Elementary School PTA, and First United Methodist Church. The total donations reported this evening are $70,357, and that brings our year-to-date total to $940,436.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Thank you to the generous community. Appreciate it. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sullivan, second by Mr. Hibbs to approve the consent. Any discussion? Please vote. All members present voting in the affirmative. The consent passes. Takes us to our discussion items. First item is the review of the framework for the district and campus improvement plans. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. This evening, we'd like to have a presentation and a discussion about our district improvement plan and campus improvement plan process that we're going to follow this year, that we're recommending to the board to follow this year, that includes the alignment between the CIPs and the DIP to our strategic plan. And so Dr. Carter has been working with principals and with staff to come up with a recommendation that makes the CIP and DIP process much more meaningful in terms of improvement. So, Dr. Carter.
President Barron, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. We like Dr. Cavassos to just mentioned, I'm just going to give just an overview of the framework that we're trying to pursue for the campus improvement plans and for the district improvement plans for, for next year. First of all, the general framework, use of the new online program. We have it as an overall heading there. It's new software that we're going to be employing, and we reviewed it with the, with the principals, and there was overwhelming support of this, this new, and they could see how it's going to be easier for them to go ahead and populate whatever they need to in their plans, and how it just automatically creates table of contents, you know, references, and all these kinds of things. And so we're very glad to be using that particular software. So the general framework is going to be the table of contents, list of data sources. It could be a huge, long list, depending on how many data sources the campuses will be using. An overall summary, comprehensive needs assessment. This will probably be a little bit more comprehensive than maybe it has been in the past because it's, it's several different data sources they're going to be looking at, but then not only just what the results are, but then what they might mean, and identifying what needs exist. So, and in that needs assessment, they can actually do attachments, multiple attachments. That's one of the things the software can do, is there are several different PDFs that can be attached to the campus improvement plan, and they can just put those in wherever they want, and even afterwards, they can still add PDF attachments. So the comprehensive needs assessment is going to be just that, it's going to be very comprehensive. The goals, SMART goals, mainly about being measurable and realistic, timely, activities with the timelines in terms of the usual layout. And that's where a lot of state requirements usually come into play, is you, a lot of times, you don't have to have a goal necessarily, that is what the state requires, but you have to address certain things. And it's in those strategies and activities, that's where probably a lot of those will be addressed. And then, of course, the progress indicators. One of the things the software has is periodic indicators, like there could be four for a quarter, and you have to indicate how far you have gone in your progress in fulfilling or finishing up whatever activities or strategies. And they have little symbols in there so that ongoing, and the district will be doing the very same thing, and there will be a mechanism by which we will notify the campuses, okay, it's, it's time to start looking at your progress, get ready to look at the report. The, the company this summer is working on additional software, or code, I should say, so that we will be able to aggregate all that, so that for, for district report, we can say, here are all the campuses, or here are the number of campuses that have reached this level in these various activities. So it's, it's going to be a nice way to give periodic reports to the board about the progress of CIP goals. One of the attachments that'll be probably universal is one you're familiar with, we have about the, the passing rates from last year, well, not last year, it'll be this year. Now, this will be probably adjusted because this was in terms of what we thought before the state or the commissioner had come out with his final decisions about the accountability system. Now, can it be the full accountability? No. The reason being, there, remember, there are four indicators, and we'll go into that June 20, but there are four indicators, and one, three, and four, we'll be able to go ahead and find out what, what the findings are for all the campuses and the district for those. But the second indicator, which is a progress indicator, that one relies on the state telling us what the growth standard is. And they may not, we may not know that until the end of the summer, in fact, when the actual report in August comes out, that's when we may know that. They have not made any commitment whatsoever as to the timing when we would find out what that growth standard is. So, but anyway, with, with everything else, we will go ahead and, and have that, so that would be across the board, all the campuses, and of course, for the district, they'll have this particular attachment. Three required goals, we are stipulating that all campuses, and of course, the district will have it as well, there are three required. One is on track for graduation, and all campus levels will have this. For the high school, the measures will be pass all required state tests taken, including TLPAS. And with that, it's not necessarily a particular standard, but the, the standard is whether or not you've gone from like beginning to intermediate, intermediate to advanced. Sufficient number of credits, going from freshman to sophomore year, just overall. But also, the third one, pass all core classes. You can have sufficient number of credits, but maybe you didn't pass English, algebra, or something. That is not being on track for graduation. There's no attendance issue. We have our policy that with, you know, and it's by state law too, with 15, you have to go into review as to whether or not you're going to be able to gain credit. And no discipline issue. Now, that particular one, of course, has a, just what measure would we be coming up with, with that one? There, we're going to go through a process, right now, this is kind of preliminary, we're going to go through a process to find out how many placements does it have to be that distinguishes a kid that says, you know, that kid is now at risk of being on track for graduation. If it is a redundant measure, then we probably won't use it. But if it does make a distinction, because for instance, a student that has everything else, but they have a lot of placements, not likely, but it's, it could be some cases like that, then we would go ahead and use that as one of the measures to indicate whether or not a student is on track for graduation in a high school. For the junior highs, with that very first goal, there are three areas. It's passing all required state tests taken, including TLPAS, and passing all core classes. And of course, there's the attendance, that there's no attendance issue. And that is, that's what it is, it's no more than, than that for, for junior high. With elementary, for grades three through six, of course, it's pass all required state tests, including TLPAS. But also with kinder through second grade, it's meeting grade level standards on our reading diagnostic test, the DRA, and EDL, and Spanish. The DMA, which is the Diagnostic Math Assessment, whether they're on grade level. And then for grade two, are they on grade level on the norm reference test in reading and mathematics? And then, of course, pass all the core classes, and there's no attendance. So it's, it's everything, it's even with a kindergartner, it could be, are they on track? Because we know that that happens very quickly, that when they get off track in kinder, that's what puts them at risk. The whole notion about being at risk is they're at risk to not graduate. So we're just trying to keep things in line along all those. So that's dealing with the goal number one. With goal number two, it's the percent passing all tests taken, and this is the measures on all levels, and it's the performance on STAR and EOC, grades three through high school in core subjects. Now, we will be looking at this more closely because the state now has defined differently what all tests taken means. It used to be that if you could have, you could pass a couple of tests, but there's one test, say for instance, four. Say, for instance, 4th grade with the, of course, there's not going to be, there may not be writing anymore. But with 4th grade, they have the three tests. A student, one student could pass reading, math, but not writing. Another one could pass reading and writing, but not math. Well, that was regarded as zero for both students. They didn't pass all tests taken. And so, that rate would be a zero. With the new accountability system, that changes now. It basically would be 2/3. Okay, so, we'll look at that as far as what does that mean? It still is in terms of the on-track, and this is like a subset of that on-track, and it gives us a little bit more specific information dealing with it. But nevertheless, even though the state accountability might be okay for on-track, yeah, you fail one test, it's likely that you're not on track for graduating. And again, still, the at-risk requirements indicate that if you fail any test, you're at risk. Number three is student engagement. Again, requiring all the campuses, and we will have it as the district as well. Student engagement is one of the required goals. Measures all levels, participation in rigorous courses. Examples, dual-credit, the pre-AP, APIB, CTE, grades 7 through 12. So, the secondary, that's the first bullet. With the rest and everybody else, student engagement in extra and co-curricular activities. However, we can grab or capture those codes that would reflect the extra and co-curricular activities, that's what we want to do. That's what we want to use. We know that we have a challenge when it comes to identifying these things and what kind of system we have in place to actually get those things captured in a system so that we can actually retrieve and see what those, the numbers of students in these extra and co-curricular activities in elementary in particular and somewhat in junior high. That's what, one of the things we're going to be pursuing. Those 4 and 5 are blank, two additional goals aligned, but they must be aligned with the strategic plan. Now, that is mostly coming out of the 28 metrics that they have to identify. What we have highly recommended to all of them is use one that it's both aligned with that and using one of those, but it also fulfills a requirement of the state. If at all possible, don't try to do, you know, too much of all this because if you have too many goals, then the whole monitoring process and focus could be jeopardized. So, that's one of the things that we've stipulated. State-required goals, it says goals. We have to address the violence prevention and intervention goal, the coordinated health program goal, the NCLB goals, and Title I school-wide plan. Now, what we have found is that with a lot of these, sometimes you don't have to have it as a goal, but you certainly have to, like I said before, address it very specifically in a strategy, very clearly. So, that's one of the things that is an optional for us. Now, our timeframe for this, we, last April, we had a principal meeting with input on proposed goals and shared the draft of the CIP timeline. A subsequent meeting with the principals, level meetings. We went over the CIP goals that are to be presented here and also going over the software. And this is where they, again, resoundingly were in favor of the software. Tonight, we are presenting for discussion the general framework of the CIP/DIP framework. Next week, CIP talking points will be devised, and we'll be sending out to the campus SBDMs in the green bag. And then, from May 8th through June 6th, we have the campus SBDM discussion using the talking points only because that's when they can start using it to the end of the school year. May 14th and 15th, we have Studer meetings. The reason we even put this in here is because that could have a bearing on what they put in their campus improvement plans. So, we want to be sure to indicate that, yes, that's part of what this timeframe is about. May 16th, presentation to the board on the employee engagement survey results. And then, May 17th, the next day, all the way to the end of the school year, the employee engagement survey results are actually rolled out at the campuses and the district levels. May 22nd and May 30th, there are double sessions with each one. There'll be some special principal training on the use of that software. Comes from 806 Technologies. And of course, we're anticipating that June 6th, we will actually get the STAR results. So, there's a lot of intensive work to happen from that point into the next, which is the following week for the Leaders Learning Together. It's going to include data-wise application. Remember, that's the process by which we do data analysis. There's a very definite stepwise process for that and applying that to the CIP. And also obtain principal input on the action plans for year 2. June 13th, the last day of the LLT, we actually have Studer training. And the same day is the Curriculum Audit Report to the Board. June 17th, the following week, in fact, the entire week, we'll have available intensive training on data-wise application to the CIP. Okay, that is strictly optional by principals. We're just going to make it available that if they want to come, we can, we'll be right there helping them learn how to do that. July 29th is the principals' return, and we'll have updated CIP talking points for the principals, you know, after that. And then, August 2nd, we're actually going to have a CIP workday. The principals were very enthusiastic about this. They're really going to just be rolling up their sleeves, and all day, it's working on their CIPs. Basically, it's coming up with kind of something that's ready to present to the SBDMs when teachers begin coming back. Also, they integrate the year 2 action plans and the curriculum audit recommendations for the, for next school year. So, there's a lot of stuff to be looking at in order to develop really, really good, effective, and, you know, life CIPs. August 6th, 7th, and 9th, we have the LLT again. And this will include the Studer Evidence-Based Leadership Training, which we're kind of, well, I'm excited about it. I don't know how excited they are. I think they'll be excited about it too, very definitely. So, that will, there's, all these things will be very much aligned. August 12th, the SBDM meetings will continue from the previous year, but they'll continue and probably be more intensive now and working on the CIP. And from August 19th to the 23rd, the teachers return and with the week, with the district professional development going on. August 26th, school starts. September 1st through the 20th, the central office reviews the CIP, and there's collaboration because, you know, the SBDMs can be working with it. There'll be exchanges back and forth, I'm sure, with helping the campuses develop good CIPs. And September 20th, the SBDM meetings are completed. That's tentative. So much of this depends on the actual meeting of the board in October. But, and then, September 23rd to the 30th, the CIP final review is made by the area superintendents. And then, in the October board meeting, the CIP/DIP discussion action by the board. Any questions?
Mrs. Solins.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carter. We've come a long way. This is, you know, every meeting, there's another giant step. And it's, I think this is, this is one of them. I think it lays the architecture that will be very helpful to the district. And I did have one question, particularly on the on-time graduation. Is, I think it's fantastic, and I commend you, Dr. Kavasos, for taking that down to the very elementary school level. Will there be any reporting of that to the parent that the student is on track for graduation?
I think this would be part of the all-communication of everything. You're talking about for the individual student?
Individual student.
We haven't, it's interesting. We haven't talked about that, but I'm sure that's going to be.
But even in that particular, you know, they know, it's one thing to get a report card, and it's a great thing. It's a great communication tool. But, you know, I think that if we have data that would give us any indication that a student may be slipping off that track for on-time graduation, that would be a very powerful information for a parent to know as early as possible.
Yes.
I've never seen you so happy. Dr. Carter, great job.
It's the stuff that makes me happy.
We, the board, appreciate your crunching those numbers for us and doing all that work. Thank you. There are no more questions. Excellent.
Thank you.
Really have come a long way. One more item, legislative update. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Barron. Cindy Powell will present a brief legislative update. Cindy?
President Barron, board members, Dr. Kavasos. I think we only have maybe two more of these to go after this meeting. But I do have a brief update on some legislative actions to call everybody's attention to this yet again. The legislature does adjourn May 27th, so there are 25 days left in the session. And we are at a point now where literally, if bills have not come out of committee, they likely are not going to come out of committee. And even if they do, it's very unlikely they're going to find their way onto the House or Senate floor. Monday is the last day to vote bills. This is for the House to vote bills out of committee. And you can see here, this just kind of gives you a flavor for how, where we are in the process. The two days following that are the last two days that calendars will be published, and those determine what's coming to the floor. So, we really are at a point where if a bill's not moving now, it's not going to. Several bills, though, of interest. House Bill 5 is the signature piece of education legislation this year, and that's the one that relates to accountability ratings, including assessments, and actually graduation requirements as well. This bill has passed the House, and it's moved on to the Senate, and it seems to kind of be on hold or in a hole at the moment. There's some speculation that there's lots of backroom dealing going on with this bill at the moment. But it has been voted from the Senate Education Committee and is awaiting debate on the floor. It's actually on the intent calendar. When the Senate acts on this, and it's likely that they will, and they will probably, they've already at a committee made several changes to the bill from what the House passed. And so, a conference committee will negotiate the differences in these bills. Senate Bill 2 is the bill that deals with charter schools and setting the cap on charters. This bill, I'm told now, is tied very tightly with House Bill 5, and that really for House Bill 5 to pass, Senate Bill 2 also has to pass. This particular bill has been passed by the full Senate, and it has been voted favorably. It's substituted out of the House Public Education Committee. It's passed by the Senate. This bill started out being one of tremendous concern for public school districts. And as it was passed by the Senate, there had been some changes that have improved the bill some. It now, when the bill was originally filed, school districts were required to make available and to offer for sale to charter schools any underutilized facility you had or any vacant building you had as a public school district. That was amended out, and so now, then, the bill requires that a school district give a charter school the opportunity to make an offer to buy or lease a piece of property that the school district has listed for sale, and it is at fair market value. This bill also grants the Commissioner of Education the authority to grant charters. This is something that, an authority that would be moved over from the State Board of Education. This bill also gives the Commissioner the authority to, again, to issue new charters. And it raises the cap on charters by 15 each year for a period of four years until we reach 305 total charters available in year 2019. And then, it directs the TEA to develop a framework for evaluating charters to gain, to gauge their performance. House Bill 1025 is a supplemental appropriations bill. We talked about this one last time. This is kind of interesting. The House has passed this, and it's moved on to the Senate. This particular bill would actually appropriate additional money to public school districts for the current year, not even the upcoming biennium, but for the 12, 13 year that we're in right now. It has been referred to the Senate Finance Committee, and it's awaiting hearing there. So, again, as we looked at the calendars a minute ago, you know, it's really going to have to take some quick action to move this along. But if it were approved by the Senate, the funds would be distributed to all school districts on a straight per-wada basis at the rate of 7250 per-wada. And our estimated revenue that we would gain from that would be about $5.5 million. So, that's something of interest, and I'm not hearing enough about this to make me think that this is a likely outcome. But the appropriations bills, these are the budget bills for the upcoming biennium. And we've had a different version of the budget. It's been passed by both the House and the Senate. And so, the conference committee has started working on those appropriations bills now to negotiate the differences. And under these two different versions of the budget, you can see what our revenue gains would be. Under the Senate version, for just the upcoming year, we would gain almost $9 million. Under the House version, $16.4 million. So, the House version of the budget is much more favorable to public education at this point. The accountability system has also been an item of great interest this spring. The Commissioner has, of Education, has announced the rating system for the current year. And so, this year's ratings, the 2013 ratings, will actually be announced on August 8th. And the new rating structure will be made up of four separate components. Student achievement, student progress, closing performance gaps, and post-secondary readiness. So, districts that, and campuses that have students in grades 9 or above will have to meet certain targets on all four of those categories. And the districts with students in grades 8 or lower must meet the target on the first three indices. And that excludes post-secondary readiness as they do not have to meet the target on that. The rating will simply be one of two things. Either you've met the standard or improvements are required. So, it's going to be quite different. This is considered a transition year, and TEA will continue to work on a conversion of this new system to that A to F rating system that we've heard a lot about in the legislature for next year. And the Commissioner was quick to say that any bills that do pass from now until the end of the session that might impact the accountability system will certainly be taken into account when they make modifications to this system. And also, I'll bring one other to you that has come up today even since we published this particular presentation. And that has to do with Senate Bill 1458, which has to do with TRS. And we talked about this in our last session. This is the one that would require school districts to contribute 1.5% of TRS against the total payroll. And there's a rather complex calculation that goes along with that. But we understand now that that bill is scheduled to be heard on the Senate floor tomorrow and that there will be a substitute actually offered for the bill. But it still would require 1.5% contribution from school districts. And it would actually increase the contribution that active members have to pay into TRS up from 6.4% all the way up to 7.7%. And it raises the state contribution to 6.8%. And it changes a rule that will be of interest to lots of folks. For members that have five or fewer years of service by September 1 of 2014, the bill would keep that rule of 80 for years of service and age. But it changes the minimum retirement age for un-reduced annuity from 62 down to, I'm sorry, from 60 to 62. And so, this is a bill that could, would come with a very large price tag on it. We took a first stab at the, prior to the last meeting to project this. We've now gotten some estimates from MoKaseen Associates, our legislative consultants. And they are estimating that the impact of Arlington would be probably in the neighborhood of $3.7 million. So, I think we have some phone calls to make tomorrow. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Barron. Ms. Powell, Senate Bill 2, SB 2, which I know came out of the House Public Ed. They also had some mention in there about open enrollment charter schools being able to compete in UIL events. What kind of impact does that have on us? Could that cause extra? Could that cause extra travel? Is it causing, you know, I worry about then recruiting as that goes in to all our...
The recruiting, yes. The recruiting is a particular concern, and certainly, you know, we don't always know that the charters are, those kids are held to some of the same standards that our kids are, and we do have the whole question about recruiting. You know, with UIL and the way districts are formed, we would continue to participate with schools that are comparable in size to ours. I don't know that there would be a charter large enough that we would be put into a district with a charter, but this is something that we would not be in favor of.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pampa?
Thank you, President Byrne. Just to be clear, that even though the, in the accountability system as it's being recommended, even though there are now four ratings, they're all still based on one test, on the STAR test, right?
Dr. Carter maybe can answer that, I think, better than I can.
Yeah, really, it all boils.
Yes, they haven't factored in about TELPASS and whether or not that's going to be additional, but that's such a, you know, much fewer number of students that actually be, because a lot of them take STAR, and so STAR tends to supersede. The fourth indicator, though, is about graduation rate.
Post-secondary readiness?
Yeah, graduation rate. Then it has, then there's, they have some additional things in there that there could be some substitution of, I mean, this is what the bill is trying to address, some substitution of some, you know, like college-bound test, SAT, ACT, to replace STAR if they can. But as it stands right now, it just, it's STAR. And of course, with graduation rate, an awful lot of that is could be on the, right now, it's going to be strictly on tax and course completion. We have, that's not nearly much of a problem right now. It would be if it was STAR.
And on the student achievement part, right now, we, our accountability system is based on the lowest performing group. That's how we're rated. Is that, is this different then?
The, you could still have the same thing happen where it's harder to find who that group might be because of the way they accumulate the overall, you know, the 0 to through 100 for each index. But if you look into it, you can say, oh, my goodness, that's the group that didn't get us, you know, beyond the, that kept us from achieving the target of 55, say, for instance, with the, I think that's the target for the progress. No, that's for the gap reduction. So you could still, you could identify. But the thing is, it's not nearly as much, the very first target, it's not by the subgroups at all.
Okay.
And then, and then there's certain subgroups that it uses for the second one, the third one. It's only those particular ones that the campuses have had trouble with as far as achievement the previous year, how did they do, and the economic disadvantage. And then, of course, with the fourth one, it breaks it out as well. So there's certain areas that you could say, uh-huh, you could trace back and say, this is the one group.
But it's taken into account, though, from the way you make it sound, is not, like, right now is just, if you're, if one of your subpopulation groups at Lamar High School, not enough students passed, then you're an unacceptable school. It sounds to me like this is kind of doing away with that. It won't be so, so one directional. I mean, it'll blend in the scores of how well everybody else did.
Yeah.
And then it may bring it up.
And that's, and that's exactly it. They try to put some things in there, like the gap reduction piece as an example. With the other indicators, at least it's, it's all weighted together, and in some places it's double weight in some things. And that's why you could say, it's, when I say some things could be identified, if you were unacceptable and you were right at the margin, and all the other groups were right at the margin, but there was one group that wasn't, you would know exactly what that was. But generally speaking, it's going to be all over the place so that you couldn't trace it as easily, generally.
And it's, could you have a school that was, that had one group that was below the mark, but the rest of the groups are above enough, enough above the mark too where the school as a whole is rated, you know, acceptable?
Yes.
Whereas today, it would be rated unacceptable.
That's right.
And that's one of the things we're kind of looking for, so that gives you a better, a fuller picture of what the entire school performance is.
That's correct.
Okay, so in that way, I think that's a beneficial...
In that way, it's a more comprehensive kind of accountability system, yes.
Okay. And on the, yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Ms. Powell, that TRS percent, was that on the district's payroll? Is that how it would run a percentage of jobs?
It is, and it's, it's a rather complex, there's multiple parts to it. The people who are, have, have a state minimum salary schedule, that contribution is figured one way, and for employees that are not on a state minimum salary schedule, that contribution is figured on your base pay. So then it's the two parts combined. So this has evolved and changed since it was first even referred to committee. There was a substitute in committee, I think, that has even made it a little more difficult, a little more expensive for us, way more expensive than what was first projected.
It looks like the state is trying to pass the buck to us and not fulfill their obligations to the TRS to start with.
I think there are a lot of people who would agree with that. And we did, the district did take a position on that bill when it was scheduled to be heard in committee. We did register a formal position opposing that bill, and we will continue to oppose it.
There are no more questions. That takes us to our open forum for non-agenda items. The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speaker. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. I have one card from the audience. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You will have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation, and when the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your Our single speaker tonight is Mr. Luis Castillo. Subject is special interests in government politics. Evening, Mr. Castillo.
Good evening, board. President Byrne, distinguished board members, staff. My name is Luis Castillo. I'm the Arlington Lulac Council president, and Arlington Lulac Council, Lulac Council is a special interest group, like many other special interest groups in our system of government, and our aim is to advance the educational, political, social, economic interests of the Hispanic population here in Arlington. And we try to influence policymakers to advance those interests. But just like Arlington Lulac is a special interest, there's other interest groups trying to influence the board. Another one is the teachers' union, and sometimes recent events that has occurred have posed a question in my mind as to the effectiveness of the lobbying effort by the teachers' union on the board. For example, the, or the distinguished board member here, president, is the former president of a local teachers' union. We have another board member who is married to a teacher, and his parents were also lifelong teachers, and I think there's nothing wrong with that. I'm just kind of pointing that out. The teachers' union also contributes thousands of dollars to the board's elections. In fact, the two board members who are up for reelection this year received the endorsements for the teachers' union and presumably some money. So, and special interest groups give money and endorsements, not out of the kindness of their heart, because they're trying to influence policy on matters that protects their interests of the membership. And that's just our system of government. But I think that at some point in time, we need to balance those interests between what's the good for the public and for our kids and those of the special interest groups. The recent event of the pencil shaving incident is still lingering, and I can understand that, you know, that the board is constrained to speak about personal matters in respect to the due process of the teachers. I can relate to that. I used to be on that side. I used to represent police officers. But we can still have a discussion on teacher misconduct from a policy perspective. We don't have to deal with the specific incident, but we can still have an open and honest discussion on teacher misconduct. But the board has been reluctant to even mention or talk about police, I mean, teacher misconduct or zero tolerance policy for actions that teachers commit. And so I'm trying to weigh here the influence that the teachers' union has on the board. As I pointed out, you know, it seems to be effective, and it seems to be working. But who is lobbying for our students, for our kids? They don't give any money to the board. They don't even vote. So I just want to post that out there. Now, I'm not, I come here, you know, every now and then, and I don't post these questions or make, or make comments or criticize, just for the sake of coming up here. I'm hoping that someone will pick up something on it, and also it becomes a matter of public record. You know, so I hope that my efforts, you know, will ring a bell to somebody's mind and say, you know what, we might have to rethink this whole thing. So that's one point I want to make up. Another is that the minute thing is not on. And another thing I want to talk about is our system of government, that we, it offers citizens to criticize our public officials and public policies. I mean, some public officials I've noticed take exception to it, and they say that I come here and attack the board or them personally. Well, I don't know you all personally, you know, had you not been elected to the board, I would never have heard of you. So that's not the aim. The aim is to criticize, and that's protected in our Constitution, the First Amendment. And if some board members or council or any public official has a hard time dealing with that, you know, maybe they need to rethink their political career, you know, because criticism is very much part of the process. And if they can't take a punch, then they're in the wrong business. And so my criticism is just that criticism. It's not personal. It's about policy, it's about politics, it's about processes, but it's not about personal matters. So for those board members or any elected official who has a hard time accepting that, you know, I think that in the famous words of an AISD teacher, I think they'd rethink and maybe say, go back to Mexico, if you don't like it. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Byrne. This evening, I'd like to share some important information about students and staff that I think are of high interest. First of all, Bowie High School students Raven Haynes and Claudia Cantazano Solis won first place at the Dallas Morning News 22nd Annual High School Journalism Day and competition in Class A Short Feature category for their story titled for "In the Road: Way to Go, Raven and Claudia." And you see a picture of them right there. Next, in consultation with Harvard, Raise Your Hand Texas selected Matt Brown and Jennifer Young as two of 50 principals for this year's program. The Raise Your Hand Texas Harvard Leadership Program is a selective, week-long professional development summer course taught by world-class faculty at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. Remensei Elementary Principal Matt Brown was chosen for Improving Schools: The Art of Leadership, and it's designed to identify and helps young, or school leaders in early stages of their careers to help them expand their leadership skills, explore how to enhance student learning and create success for himself and his school. Arlington High School Principal Jennifer Young was chosen for Leadership and Evolving Vision. It's designed for experienced school leaders and will help strengthen her leadership and management skills and revitalize her personal vision for leadership. Congratulations to Matt and Jennifer for representing AISD in this prestigious program at Harvard this summer and towards expanding their roles as leaders in Arlington Independent School District. We're very proud of them. Carter Junior High debuted their first musical in 16 years, Willy Wonka the Musical, under the direction of Stephanie Bursey, Chad Hay, and Jeff Moss. Willy Wonka entertained audiences, myself included, on Saturday, April 12th and April 13th. Thank you for your dedication to the fine arts program. The musical was outstanding. Those junior high students were, did a fantastic job. The IB art students recently completed their IB interview process, and at the conclusion of that process, there's an art show and a reception held at the PDC. 100 pieces of artwork done by Arlington High, Bowie High, Lamar High, and Sam Houston High School were showcased, and congratulations to all the IB students in that art show. It was a very, very special art show in display. On April 19th, the schools in the Martin Network collaborated together to put on a service project called the Golly Whoppers Games. The event featured carnival booths for elementary students to practice their math skills, of all things. And so it was very well attended. I was able to participate and go to that event, and the Martin Network did a fantastic job for elementary students to prepare them in their math skills. Very proud of them. Earlier this week, Bryant Elementary celebrated their 20th anniversary. It was a wonderful celebration with student and faculty performances and remarks from principals who have served at Bryant Elementary in the past. The Bryant Bricks, who you see there, they're not actually bricks, they're people who started the school when it first opened, and they were there when it first opened, and they helped plan the celebration, the Bryant Bricks. Derek Rodriguez, an Arlington High School avid senior, has been selected as a Gates Millennium Scholar. It's an outstanding accomplishment. This scholarship is given to only 1,000 students a year throughout the nation. Derek is, is an outstanding student, and it's a great honor to be a Gates Millennium Scholar. So congratulations to Derek. Finally, earlier today, Lamar High School was named an avid national demonstration school. This recognition is earned for being an exemplary model of avid advancement via individual determination and demonstrating the very best of avid methodologies and strategies. They joined Carter Junior High and Hutch Junior High, or Hutchinson Junior High, in achieving this great honor of being a national demonstration site. Of the 4,800 schools implementing avid, only approximately 120 received this designation. And I was able to attend their entry with the avid visitors and the people who reviewed their school, and I can tell you Lamar did an outstanding job. Their team of avid teachers and students were outstanding, and they impressed the team, and they received this national demonstration honor today. So congratulations to Lamar High School, the staff, and Dr. Harmon for their leadership. Concludes my report.
Thank you. Board member reports. Mrs. Pena?
As a director for the Arlington School District on the Texas Association of School Board, I attended a meeting in Austin. I'm also on a budget committee for that group representing AISD. I went to the Student Leadership Advisory Board Speak Up at Martin High School. I attended the Bowie's Girls Rock 2013 Award Ceremony with Dr. Cavassos. I attended the Arlington Chambers Champion Education Committee meeting. I attended the Business Professionals of All Our High Schools Appreciation Luncheon. I attended the Bryant Elementary 20th Anniversary Celebration with Dr. Cavassos. I went to a meeting earlier this week with a Texas Association of School Board staff member and Dr. Cavassos. And today I attended with Mr. Pampa at Knox Elementary Cinco de Mayo Celebration. And I would also like to remind our community that early voting is going on. Don't forget to go out and vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Pena. Mrs. Owens?
Thank you, President Byrne. I've had several great events to attend as well, Ms. Pena, but I want to make sure that everyone knows about an upcoming one. And I hope that you will get out your pens right now and mark it on your calendar. That is a, an event for CB Berry Elementary School through their I Am program. They put together every year the really big show, and this is a really big event that is put together by the Dance Theater of Arlington. They take, they work with the students all year at CB Berry. They ask for you to come and to be audience members, to cheer these kids on. It's free, and I can't think of a better place to be. May 15th at 7:00 PM, May 16th at 10:30 AM, and I hope to see you there.
Mr. Hibbs?
Well, it's been a whirlwind past month for me, but I'm not going to go and tell you every place I've been, but it... you every place I've been, but it, I feel like I've been in just about every school in the district. We've had, we've got some great things going, guys, and I, I am so excited. Just think about the things that we went through tonight, and I, these are the things that should be reported on. These are the things that are exciting. The student performance by Sam Houston, the Mariachis, the youth education town. Six out of seven scholars are going, were from Arlington. That's huge. These, I, I asked each one of the students, and none of them had been to Los Angeles before. This is going to be the opportunity of their lifetime. That's the story that we want to be telling about Arlington, Texas. The recognition of the, of our CBOC and how great those individuals have worked on those committees for us and citizen involvement. I mean, it, it's one thing to be able to come and criticize, but it's another thing to get involved and be part of it. And that is so cool. These individuals have worked on that committee. Leslie Bettis' appointment at Wood Elementary is a great appointment. She's going to do wonders at that school, and I am so excited about it. And I know that the faculty and staff and she are going to work very closely together. And I will tell you, Dr. Cavazos, when you just went through each one of those individual things about the, the Gates Scholar, the, these different individual accomplishments for these students, this is what our, what we really need to make sure is getting out into the community. Because what's going on in the Arlington School District is greatness. We've got awesome things going on. We've got awesome fine arts, our, our athletic programs are excelling, and we, then we have these individual accomplishments. I'm happy to sit up here and represent as one board member, but I want to acknowledge each one of you, and I want to acknowledge the individuals back here, senior staff. You guys have done a tremendous job, and looking forward to the next three years being able to work with you.
Mr. Pampa.
Thank you, President Barron. After we left the Cinco de Mayo Celebration at Vita Knox Elementary, I had the opportunity to stop by 600 New York Avenue and visit that facility. And what an impressive facility. I think, just to pick up on what Mr. Hibbs was talking about, the great things going on in, in our school district. Well, this is a collaboration between the city and the district, and, and from what I hear, there, there's not a lot of cities where there's such a collaboration or such close collaboration. For them to donate a, a building and for us to come in and renovate the building and create the environment that's been created for these students that, for whatever reason, are at high risk of dropping out or have dropped out and are ready to drop back into, into school and go through our recovery, recovery program. I met some of the staff there, and they are thrilled to be in such a, such a great facility. The students that were there were excited to be in such a beautiful building. It just feels professional. It feels good to be in there. And we talked about at the beginning of our strategic plan that the physical environment impacts the learning environment. And you could definitely see it, it, it was palpable in that, in that building. And so that's another great example of, of something that is really right, that is, that is going, that is, that is working out really well for our students. And those are the, really the students that we have to reach. They, they've dropped out. They, you know, they were, they were on their way to growing up without a, without a college, without a high school diploma, and now they're, they're picking it up. They're graduating, they're graduating kids all the time there. So great job from the administration, and I want to say a public thank you to the city and to our mayor and to our council for partnering up with, with us on, on this project. It's working out really well. Thank you.
Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, President Barron. And Mr. Pampa, some people would say those students, and I believe them, have worked even harder than many of our other students to actually get that high school diploma. So when you watch some of those students, when you watch a 35-year-old walk across their little stage and she gets her high school diploma, and that reason you ask her, because she has a full-time job, and last year I asked her, I said, why'd you come back and get it? She goes, how am I supposed to tell my kids to get their high school diploma when I don't have mine? That's what 600 New York does. So, so I, I look forward to going over there. I haven't seen the new facility, and Wendy Carrington and her staff do a great job over there. I want to take a second and congratulate Dr. Cavazos. I, I don't know if it was brought up officially in the board meeting, being appointed to the United Way Board of Directors for Tarrant County. We have a great partnership with United Way. They do a lot of work with us on early learning so that kids are coming into the AISD prepared, and they have a major goal of graduation for 2020. And we're, we're going to start judging on that by third grade reading levels, is how you determine if we're increasing our graduation rate. They do a lot of projects, and Dr. Cavazos has been our guinea pig with United Way of working on a grant with, with Target, with Strive. And, and Strive is a great program that comes around, and, you know, we have made the first cut, and now we are working on application for the second cut, and that'll be a great program that sets up a center within Arlington provided by Target and an education foundation. And, and then the last note, just a bit of congratulations. And most of my colleagues and Dr. Cavazos were able to be there. Last Thursday night on the 26th, Arlington had a huge distinct honor of having a Hill Elementary, Bailey Junior High, and Arlington High School student, and more importantly, a Texas A&amp;M Aggie. Wait, I guess I can't say more important. But I can say he did all the right things. A young man named Luke Jokel, I'm part of the Jokel family here from Arlington, had the distinct honor of going number two in the overall, number two overall in the NFL Draft. And that is something, as we held an event, partnered with Shady Valley, partnered with Arlington High School Football Booster Club, Brand Era Marketing, Grace Lutheran Church. What an event that we will probably never be able to hold one of those events again. Not many cities in this country can have someone who's been drafted that high. But more importantly, to show the class of the Jokel family, they were all in New York. So I said, boy, you know you really made it when someone throws a party for you and you can't even be there. That's when you made it. But more importantly, they asked Luke, what do you want to do when you see, can you donate some items? Where do you want the money to go back to? And his first response was back to the Arlington High School Football Booster Club, because it helped get him to those levels. So in that short night, they raised over $3,000 for the Arlington High School Football Booster Club, because a young kid who is 21 years old, just turned 21, decided to sign some autographs and give them back, and just a great event, but the whole community celebrated everyone. So, to the Jokel family, outstanding job in everything you've done. To all the colleagues and everyone in Arlington, at Hill, Duff, Hill, Bailey, and Arlington High, and A&amp;M, you did a great job raising that young man. So congratulations, Jokel family.
Mr. Hibbs.
One last thing, I forgot, and I would be remiss for not bringing this up. May 7th is teacher appreciation, and we want to let our teachers know that we appreciate them. They're doing an awesome job. I'm actually buying two teachers at two schools lunch next week, so looking forward to it. Yeah, and if you go to Chipotle after 4:00, 4:00 PM next week, it's a buy one, get one free for teachers only. After 4:00 PM. While Mr. Hogg and all his friends were at the party for Mr. Jokel, some of us were at the media fair, shaking hands with 300-plus kids who created electronic projects, photos, media, websites, animations, movies. It's, it's just amazing what our little kids are doing in the classroom electronically. It's just incredible. Some of the projects are so professional. We had a good time, didn't we?
That's right. Okay, 600 New York. Mr. Pampa? I consider that place like going to a specialist if you have a, a medical problem. You walk in there and you say, this is the right place to be. And all the specialists are there, they get the job done. SLAB, we're going to bring the Student Leadership Advisory Board in. First meeting in June, so we can thank them for their work and give them our certificate.
And meet the new.
And meet the new ones, yes. The Student Council Juniors for next year. That's how it works.
Class, junior class presidents.
Yeah. Ju, the junior class presidents for next year are going to be the SLAB personnel for this coming year. It's amazing. We're almost done. Madam Secretary Assistant Person, anything for the record? It is now 9:04 PM. We are now moving into closed session pursuant to Section 551.071 for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on subject matter authorized by the law, and Section 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will not be returning into open session. We're adjourned.